Good evening and welcome to the Independent City Council meeting. It's Tuesday, November 24th, 2020 at 6:30 in the evening. Good evening. I hope everybody is getting ready for Thanksgiving and keeping distance this Thanksgiving and wearing your mask. I'm sitting in the council chambers on my own, but when anybody walks in, I will be putting on a mask. And I hope you folks at home will be wearing a mask whenever you're not with the people you currently live with. So wearing a mask keeps everybody safe. Let the record show that counselors are all here except Counselor Ransom Smith, who had a death in the family and will not be with us this evening. We have the minutes of the November 10th meeting in front of you, and do they meet with your approval?
Move to approve. Second.
Have a motion second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. I hear no opposition. Motion carries. We're going to go to visitor and public comment, and I believe we have somebody who is going to be making a public comment this evening. So I'm going to let our city recorder help make that happen. Good evening and welcome to city council. If you could identify yourself for the record, please, and then you have five minutes.
Hello, my name is Jim Wixson. I live in the airpark here in Independence, 634 Cestus Street. And this is my third appearance before you on the same matter. And I'm hoping that we can clear it up once and for all this time. The matter is a lamp pole which is in the middle of a driveway of mine. And not only obstructs the driveway, but in fact, it has been struck by a delivery truck trying to deliver into that driveway. This all started back in May. And I noted, I called Pacific Power at that time and told them about this and asked them if they would kindly move the pole. It's an old pole in any case. And I I also contacted the city and about this. And then I came and I wrote a letter to the mayor and to you. And I addressed you on June 9th and petitioned you to please get that lamppost out of my driveway. So after that, I was contacted by Kai Cotum, who said that the pole was not in the driveway and it did not appear that he had even read my letter. So I came back again and spoke with you on June 9th. And again, asked you to move the pole out of my driveway. This time I brought a picture of it, which showed very clearly the pole is the middle of my driveway. The fact that it was hit by the truck speaks for itself. After that, I got a bill. Well, after that, Pacific Power came out, did not move my lamppost, but in fact, they simply straightened it out. It threw a little bit of dirt down and next to it and sent me a bill for over $700 for doing this. So I came again on June 9th and spoke to you and reported all this and again asked you to please move that pole. No. Since after that, I came on October 27th and addressed you again about the same matter. And what I found out that subsequent to that, that city manager Tom Pesimire was going to talk to me about this. Well, he did call me up this morning and we talked about it. And I, he wants to meet with somebody from Pacific Power. I pointed out that I had requested that they do that way back in September. Well, before that even after, from the beginning. And so I said, I'd be willing to meet anytime, anyplace with anybody, but nothing was going to change the facts. The fact is that this thing is in my driveway and my neighbor Mike across the street sees it every day. He drives past, so he could vouch for that fact. Now, I, Tom came out this afternoon and looked at the pole and he said, number one, that the city does not recognize that as a driveway. I have no idea what that means. I don't think that cities think, but any person could look at that and see that it's a driveway. And I will add that almost every house in this, in the airpark has two driveways. One to go behind the house to reach the hangar and the other for the garage. So this is not unusual. In addition to that, he said that he saw no public good coming from moving this pole. But I say, if I'm not part of the public, I don't know what I am or what the public is. And getting a lamppost out of one's driveway is definitely a good thing and good for the public. Certainly for me or anybody else who lives in, lives in the airpark. And so what I'm asking again is that you take a position on this thing. Because if the city council requests that this pole be moved, it will be moved. And if it doesn't, I fear that it will never be moved. And that the next thing that will happen is I'll be done for outrageous price for straightening the pole and repacking it, and the problem will be the same as ever. So what I say is that we need a voice to speak out for people and to confront bureaus. And this is why we have elected officials. And if without elected officials such as yourself, we are in the absolute power of bureaus and bureaucracy, which are unable to see things that anybody else can see and do not recognize what is, what is good for the public. And so what I say is that you are the voice of us and this is what we have to depend upon. And I hope that we can resolve this thing to get this done. And I would answer gladly any questions.
And thank you. And then so what I'm going to ask is Mr. Pesimire, since this has come before us before, would you like to speak to this since, and this is what we talked about in advance? You're muted? You're still mute? Thank you.
Yeah, so you know, the city recognizes a concrete driveway drop in front of Mr. Wixson's property. That driveway drop is the maximum width that it can be. And this pole is located to the west of that. Matter of fact, the pole is located almost directly in line between the two properties that are there, which is exactly where you would expect a utility pole to be placed. Mr. Wixson has created a gravel area that kind of wraps around between him and his neighbor's property. And there are a number of situations like that with a lot more acute turns. Essentially, you have to come off of the concrete driveway, drive onto the gravel and then go around the house. That pole's been there for probably 30 years when the subdivision was originally put in and Mr. Wixson bought the property a few years ago. And the city is really governed by a franchise agreement that we have with Pacific Power. And that franchise agreement is pretty straightforward. It says that the city can only request relocation of their utilities if there is a public benefit. And I would define a public benefit as a benefit to the public at large, not to individuals or just one or two individuals in a particular place. And I think that's really what this boils down to is because we have an agreement with Pacific Power that limits when we can and cannot request relocation of utilities. I find that this really doesn't meet the public benefit at large. It certainly benefits Mr. Wixson and it might benefit his neighbor. But it doesn't benefit the public in large, and I don't think it meets the intent of the franchise agreement that we have. And I think this really largely boils down not to a measure of whether it can be moved or not, but you know, who's going to pay for it? And the agreement also outlines very specific terms that the Pacific Power will not be paid for for changes made for the convenience of a private customer. So you know, really at this point, I have offered to meet with Pacific Power. They have agreed to meet with me next week and we're going to go out and look to see if there's something that they want to do voluntarily. But you know, Kai kind of made a decision on this back in May of this year. That was appealed to me. I made a decision and I think that from what I read in the agreement, that that's the proper decision. And we should just move forward, see if Pacific Power is willing to do anything voluntarily. But I don't think that the city is in a position based on their agreements to be asking for this.
Okay, so that, do council members have any questions for the manager at this point? I don't see anybody flagging me. Okay, sir? That's, that's, that's the decision and that the council has.
May I respond to Mr. Pesimire's talk?
Very, very briefly, sir.
Okay, what I say is what I've said before. If anybody who had a pole in his driveway would be in the same situation as I, and if relieving that is not a public good, I don't know what it is. And the city does not seem to know what a roadway is. There's a driveway between the two houses, me and my next door neighbor. It goes from house edge to house edge. And that's it, my property line goes somewhere through the road, but that's not the issue. The issue is simply where the lamppost is with respect to the road. And as I say, Counselor Hicks can see that every day and you can too. Drive by 634 Cestus Street and you, and you will see it. Now, if helping a person in this situation is not a public good, I cannot imagine what a public good is. And as I say, when you're up against a bureaucracy, the only thing we've got going for us is elected officials. And that's why I'm appealing to you.
Thank you for taking the time to come and visit with us this evening. And I appreciate that it's not the answer that you would hope to get, but that's what the council has.
Has the council voted on this? I hope that they will.
This is not, this is not a voting matter and there's no one who has indicated an interest in moving forward with this.
If this is a voting matter, what is?
Thank you, sir. I do appreciate you taking the time to come in.
I hope that you will vote. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, sir. So I'm going to check. Ms. Johnson, are there others to make public comment this evening?
No, but there is a person here that will be, I think you will be visiting with later in the meeting.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So we're going to go to a report. I can take my mask off since I'm the only person in the room now. At least for a moment. Periodically, I get the opportunity to make a good neighbor award. And I have someone tonight that I would like to make an award to, and I think we all know her. I'm going to ask Kate Schwartzler to come into the room, please. She doesn't, she doesn't know why she's here. I now put my mask on because I'd like to read the citation that the nomination for this good neighbor award. And thank you, Kate, for coming in when we didn't tell you why you were coming. So let me just read this. Kate Schwartzler knows why you live in a small town. It's because you want to get involved in the community, help your neighbors and make a difference. She was one of the first people in Oregon to found a co-working space in a rural community. And Indy Commons has become a hub for supporting and growing our local small business. Kate is also the president of the Independence Downtown Association, leading the development of downtown promotions, events, beautifications, and founded the Indie Idea Hub, a nonprofit business support organization. Kate's involvement in the community has been a critical part of the city's response to the COVID-19 economic crisis. She has served as an important communications outlet, informed business owners about support programs, answered questions and directed people to resources. Through Indie Idea Hub, Kate is also implementing the city's technical assistance program, helping 20 independent businesses and 10 Monmouth businesses adapt to the COVID economy. Downtown Independence is much improved and more resilient than compared to 10 or even five years ago. People like Kate are the reason why. She approaches her work asking how she can do things in a way that improves the community. She puts in a lot of unpaid extra work, making sure people are informed, connected and organized. This kind of work doesn't normally get noticed. And I think it's important that we do it tonight. That's why I'm pleased to present Kate with a good neighbor award. Thank you, Kate, for all the things you do for our community. You do make it a much better place. Appropriate applause.
Well, thank you so much. I'm super proud to call this community my home and love living here. And I'm very grateful that I'm in a position to be able to help our businesses right now. It's a very difficult time and by all of us pulling together, we're all going to be able to get through this and get our businesses through it as well. So thank you very much for the recognition.
Well, thank you. And there's a nice certificate that comes with that, that we have to put in a frame. And, and we will get that to you along with the citation. And we're thrilled to have you as part of our community. Thank you so very much. And I hope you and your mom and dad have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Thank you so much. No, I really appreciate it. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Thank you. Since now I'm the only person in the room, I can take the mask off again. Plug myself back in here. Under reports, let me add a couple of things today. I had the pleasure today to be part of 25, 30 volunteers that through the local food bank that put out Thanksgiving dinners to 350 families today. It was a wonderful experience to be part of that whole group, doing so many wonderful things. And they're not alone. St. Patrick's Church put out 250 or maybe it was even 300 farm to family food boxes today. I know the Elks have some things going on and a number of the local churches are reaching out to help people who need help during this time of the year. And I just want to say, these are the kind of things that really make our community a special place. And I can't go around and hug everybody or shake hands or anything like that. But I just want folks to know that these are the kind of things that really make a difference. It makes you feel really good and it just, it talks a lot about who our community is and what a difference so many volunteers make. Last time we were together, I talked about an upcoming meeting with the Coordinated Care Organization, Mr. Pesimire and myself, along with Representative Monmouth. We met with the Pacific Source, folks gave them a community tour and talked about some of our mental and physical healthcare needs in our area. They were very impressed with what they saw through both communities. And we're working together to find ways to improve healthcare in our region. And I think we've opened some real doors. They can see opportunity. They also can see need and the gaps. And so it's a really nice effort that our two cities working together, along with the university, to increase healthcare opportunities here in our area. And finally, just wanted to let you know that I have been asked and have again accepted to be one of the people helping with the new elected officials bootcamp that Portland State University puts on through the Hatfield School of Government. I think this is the fourth or fifth year that they have asked me to participate. It's always lots of fun and it's a real interesting opportunity. And people are very interested to hear about the exciting things that have happened in Independence and the kinds of things that you and the staff and our whole community have done. And it's a, it's a real joy to be able to share with those. So those are some of the things under my presentation. Mr. Pesimire, I think I get to you now and let's hear what you have for us today.
Yeah, so thank you, Mayor and Council. I don't have a lot, but it's just some items to, to cover. The first being that the counselor essential training that I mentioned at the last council meeting is a go in December. You'll notice that we didn't coordinate with your schedules because we felt it was really important to coordinate with the incoming council members from both Monmouth and Independence to make sure that they could make that training. And so the days that we have picked is Thursday, December 10th from 2:00 to 4:00 and Saturday, December 12th from 2:00 to 4:00. Hopefully you all can make it to that. It's really good for us all to hear that stuff. Oregon has some very interesting ways of doing governance and, and some very specific things. So if at all possible, would love to have you there. We're still working on the format for that to make sure that that all works and is COVID compliant. But really excited to be able to get Bill Monahan from the Midland Valley Council of Governments to do that. Bill has a lot of experience in many, many different areas of local government. And so hopefully we can all, including myself, learn from, from him and, and be better for it. So operational changes, you probably noticed, we have for the two week freeze, modified our operations at the city of Independence. That includes closing our facilities to the public for now. We still have curb pickup at the libraries on Tuesday and Thursday. We still are doing things by appointment and we have phone numbers listed on our building. So people can call and make appointments. We are, staff is working from home as much as we possibly can. And we have made some shift changes, although not as many as before, to make sure that we're keeping safe in our, in our workplace. We have also implemented all of OSHA's requirements. Kudos to Amanda Christensen for getting all that done and making sure that we had that in place just shortly after that was, rules were adopted. There's still some time on some of that, but I think we actually have everything in place at this point for that. So we'll have to see where we end up after this two weeks and two weeks and just where things are at. It certainly, the longer this goes on, the more concerns I have about providing great quality services to our citizens. I think right now we can still do that without much problem. We have enough ability and communication abilities to continue to provide great service. But as that time goes on, and especially as we have people that come in and do business in our facilities, that becomes problematic. So we will continue to keep an eye on that, keep our website up to date and let people know where that goes. One thing that I will mention is that because people cannot come in and make payments on the utilities, and we have a number of people that do that, they use our front counter for that. We have, we are not going to do shut offs or charge hangar fees in November and December at a minimum, just to make sure that we are not missing anybody who just simply couldn't make their payment because our doors weren't open. So it's also what we think is right, given what's going on with COVID as well as just the holiday season in general. I do want to let you know that we received a notice of civil penalty and assessment and order for permit violations in 2019 related to our sewer treatment plant. The amount of the penalty is relatively small. Considered our operations, it's a little less than $5,000. But for me, $1 is not acceptable in that area. We live along one of the greatest assets in Oregon and it's imperative that we do our part to protect that asset. Public Works has been working with DEQ on this since April, but given where the situation is currently at and the fact that they issued a civil penalty, I'm going to be taking control of that evaluation and working directly with DEQ. The goal there is to get in compliance with our MPD permit as quickly as possible. They've given us three options to deal with the assessment and order. One is to appeal the penalty. The second is to contribute to a supplemental environmental program, which is a local project that is going on in our area. The third is to pay the penalty. Unless I hear something different, my plan is just to pay the penalty and then immediately start working with DEQ to make sure that we are complying with our MPD ES permit as soon as we possibly can. And I think just before, I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Gloria was actually going to give you a quick update on our audit, which is going to be delayed. So Jason, I don't know if you can pull Glory in here real quick. I think she sent some information to you, but we think it's important that everybody hears this moving forward.
Good evening, Gloria. We see, we see your name.
There we are.
Thank you.
Um, so I just, I had Karen send out earlier today, the, the letter from our auditors. And hopefully you've had a chance to just review that real quickly. It's basically our audit is on hold because of the need to have the single audit. The single audit is when you have spent over $750,000 in federal aid grants or otherwise. And most of that that we spent to qualify for a single audit was from the CARES Act. And apparently they, the feds have not been able to issue the compliance criteria yet for doing that single audit, for the auditors to go through and, and do their testing. So with that, that holds up our regular audit to usually it doesn't affect your regular financial statements or your audit. But if they were to find anything and would require to be, to adjust anything for that, then it would go into our regular audit and it would just kind of unravel from there. So aside from that, I wanted to let you know that they have also, the auditors have also sent us another letter to those in charge of governance that you received earlier this year about the audit. And so this one is a little more informative about the single audit. And it, there's also a cover letter there that explains why they need to send you this new letter. So I will be sending those out to you tomorrow. I just wanted to give you a little, little heads up on that, that we weren't just duplicating work. Any questions? Our auditors have, are definitely open to hearing from you if you've got any questions or concerns. And of course, I'm always available if you have any questions as well. This will hold up our, that popular annual financial report, which is really disappointing to me. Because the longer that waits out before we can issue it, the less relevant it becomes. But at least we'll be able to do the extensions and we'll still be able to issue it and we'll have the template for it. And that's, that's all we can do.
Everybody have any questions? Mr. Pesimire, did you want to add anything?
I just wanted to say that this is probably all frustrating to Gloria because Gloria does a great job. I just wanted to say that this is probably all frustrating to Gloria because Gloria does a great job of making sure that all of our paperwork is ready. So we never have to ask for a delay in our audit. And we were well on track and to be able to getting that done in, in time. But there just is simply no way without the federal criteria to be able to do it. And so we're just going to have to wait and that's unfortunate. But at the same time, I think we're in a great position to have a really good audit done this year. So nothing out of the unusual here, but just wanted to make sure that you were aware of what was going on.
And I'm probably correct in assuming that we are not the only people facing exactly the same issue.
No, we're not.
Great. Everybody okay? Okay. Thank you, Gloria. Appreciate the, the information. Anything else, Mr. Pesamir?
No, not unless counsel has any questions for me or staff.
I don't see anybody jumping up and down. So I'm going to keep us moving forward. Let's go on to council liaison reports. Counselor Hicks, for anything that you'd like to report from Minnet.
Yeah, yeah. Now with the temporary shutdown, we did get a email just recently about Minnet's going to be going to kind of a skeleton staff again. And, you know, follow statewide isolation and quarantine, quarantine procedures for anybody exposed, which, you know, is what you would expect, but it's, is really nice to hear these days, given how things are going. And throughout all of COVID, they've been, staff's been wonderful at keeping the, the committee updated on all these changes. We recently had a steering meeting, which we addressed a few things. One was the viability of the Financial Advisory Committee, which was kind of around when Minnet was struggling a little more and providing us some, some good detailed information. Right now they haven't been meeting a whole lot and rather than abolish it, we're kind of on hold to see if they can provide us more information during budget time or whatnot. But I don't know, we don't know how relevant they're going to be anymore. Counselor Lopez from Monmouth is taking on a subcommittee to, to kind of revise the mission statement and vision plan for my, for the board. And we also covered maybe readdressing the strategic plan because we had a five-year plan a couple of years ago. But, and it's a decent, a good problem to have, but we've, we've already kind of hit a lot of the main goals that we outlined in that five-year plan. And then I know we've mentioned it in council before, but I think it's good to reiterate the city and, and Minnet teaming up for the Rural Broadband Capacity Program, where we got around, I think it was about $240,000 in CARES Act money to try to, to get internet connections to underserved students and to establish public wifi spots that anybody can use, which is some great stuff. Thanks about it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Counsel Martin Willis, I think you have the next one. I think you both have Park and Recreation and Planning Commission.
I do. And both fairly short, Parks and Rec met in September, but not in October or November. And so just briefly, some code changes at the dog park. Rules are changing a little bit. Yeah, there'll be a limit of three dogs per handler over the age of 18 allowed at the dog park. One dog for handlers under the age of 18. And they did add a no aggressive dogs clause. I think it used to use the word vicious. And so they, they've modified that a little bit. And that's about it for Parks and Rec. Planning Commission has been a little busier. Back in September, they approved, it's a small multiplex subdivision over on South Seventh Street, just north of Cedar. After some lengthy discussion. And then there were some adjustments made regarding hangers at the airpark being distinct from garages. So with cooperation of the homeowners association out there, basically hangers will be exempted from some restrictions, allowed to have metal siding. We're revising some industrial standards. Fred's been, like I said, really great just going through that code and finding some redundancies and just really some things that, that aren't necessary. Some floodplain standards are being adjusted so that there won't, we won't be required to have a comment period since there was no method to apply the comments since they're federal regulations anyway. And then lastly, just removing some redundancies of Public Works design standards that were duplicated in the development code. And that just creates the opportunity for something to get changed and not to get carried over. So they've just been doing, I guess, a lot of fall cleaning, as it were. And that's about it for everything that I liaise.
Sounds good. Okay, let's just keep us moving forward. I think we have a public hearing on a, a new liquor license for the Silk Tie Restaurant. I'm going to open the public hearing and Mr. Pesamir, are you presenting or is Sergeant Headland presenting? You're on mute.
I believe that Chief Mason is going to present tonight.
Okay.
Bearwell, we're waiting for him. I forgot during my city manager report to give a city recorder, Karen Johnson, an opportunity to talk about the election. So at some point it would be nice just for her to give a quick update of where things are at.
Should we do that? Just this, are you prepared, Ms. Johnson? Let's just do that right now.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have received the official canvas of votes from the county clerk. And the official results are John McArdle was elected mayor. For position number five, Sarah Jobe was the apparent winner. For position number six, Kathy Martin Willis was the apparent, apparent winner. And for position number three, there was a difference of one vote, Michael Hicks receiving 1,817 and Don Hendrick Roden receiving 1,818. This requires a statutory hand recount, which will be held on Tuesday, December 1st at 8:30 a.m. in the county courthouse. There are 4,430 ballots to be recounted. And so it's possible the recount could take more than one day. Myself and the Polk County Legal Council will be watching that, some of these observers for the recount. And if there's, and I will let you know as soon as we have the official results of that.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Ms. Johnson. Okay, Chief Mason, to you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. I am here tonight with a liquor license application for your review per Council Resolution 20-1541, which you just updated at your last meeting. So Bybuwa Thai Kitchen LLC, doing business locally as Silk Tie Cuisine, which is located at 268 Main Street here in Independence, has made application with the Liquor Control Commission for a limited on-premise sales license, which would permit the sale of wine, malt beverages and cider for on-premise consumption. Bybuwa Thai Kitchen LLC is owned by Vikuta Stein. Stein currently owns and operates two other restaurants in the area. The Bangkok Thai Bistro in Salem, as well as the Bybuwa Thai Kitchen in Kaiser. The police department has conducted a background check on Stein and her businesses. And we found no alcohol-related violations or obvious issues related to financial responsibility in that review. And that's the end of my report.
Are there any questions for the chief on this report? I don't see anybody asking questions. Since this is a public hearing, or is there anybody who has anything to say about this? I know that there's nobody outside the council chambers and I don't think, has there been any written response, Ms. Johnson?
No, we have not received any written comments.
Okay, without objection, I'm going to close the public hearing. And this is an action item. If you would care to make action.
Yes, I would. Mr. Mayor, I move to recommend approval of the above liquor license request upon payment of all fees.
Motion second by Counselor Takis. Is there a discussion? Hearing no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And is there any opposition? Hearing no opposition, motion carries. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the city manager review process. I had a chance to talk with our city manager and it's been a year since we had a sit down with him and reviewed his performance. What, what he and I talked about is that he would provide a self-evaluation and distribute that to council. And if everybody's okay with that, he would do that before the next meeting. And then what we did last time that seemed to work really well is that we would have a roundtable sit down and everybody would have a, a chance to share their thoughts after reviewing the, his self-evaluation. And because I know that this council is not shy about anything they have to say, does that sound like an okay timetable and an okay process with everybody?
I just have one question. Will the roundtable discussion be in open council or in executive session?
Think the manager's requested that's an executive session. That's, that's in his prerogative.
I have no objection to that at all.
And I assume it's going to be virtual?
Yes.
Virtual.
Yeah, yeah, it'll be a virtual, virtual. Okay. Does that sound okay with you, Mr. Pesamir? You okay?
Uh, yes, that's fine. I will put together a self-evaluation by that point in time. I heard that my last one was a little long. So I'll make it somewhere between what I did last time and just COVID operations efforts. So I'll, I'll try to respect your guys' time.
It was thorough, Tom. It was thorough.
That's right. There's a difference. Thorough versus long. That's great. Okay. Before we go into executive session and after visiting with the manager, I do not anticipate any action to have to take place out of the executive session. So after the executive session, we'll just adjourn the meeting. And so, but let's go to count, but before we go to executive session, let's have any council announcements that need to be made at this time. I don't see anybody jumping up and down about that. Okay. I'll read my script. The city council will now meet executive session for the purpose of negotiating real property transaction pursuant to ORS 192.6602E. Representative of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decisions will be made in executive session. This time the council will adjourn for the duration of the executive session. Once the executive session has adjourned, we'll return to open session and here in the chambers and virtually. And any decisions from the executive session will be deliberated at that time, which I, as I said previously, we don't anticipate any actions from the executive session. That okay with everybody? Okay. And so we're going to go into executive session. Council members and appropriate staff, please stay on. Jason will let us know when, when we can begin the executive session.